Hello, welcome everyone. Welcome to our WEIZAT AP Statistics Test Prep Session. My name is Brad Saken and I'm here to give you some tips on how to organize your study for AP Statistics and any other questions that you have today. So let me start my screen share. And what I wanted to share with you first is just some where to go to find some great questions. As you see here on the College Board page, they have access to past exam questions. They range from about two years ago, the most recent, and go back as far as early 2000s. You certainly would not need to study every single one of these, but it's a great way of organizing your studies, taking those questions from past exams. Also, we're going to look at some of those questions in a moment. But before I do that, I just wanted to sort of say that depending on where you are in your study, tutors can be of help at any point, whether it's if you're in the initial stages or getting confident and almost ready to take your exam. Search around on WEIZAT, you're welcome to meet with me, reach out to me. We'll be sharing access to my tutor profile. And then there are many others on WEIZAT. So we've got a diverse crowd that you can meet with, someone that you establish a rapport with, or whatever, also someone that has a good rate according to you and your family. So take a look around after our meeting today and see if you'd like to try out one of our tutors on WEIZAT. So the first thing I wanted to go over with all of you is the structure of what you are presented for the exam. So you have a booklet and in the front it will have some sort of pre-materials to make reference to as you're working through the exam. The formulas are at the beginning here. And you want to make sure that, you know, as you're working through your practice exams, that you're making reference back to the formulas just to make that sort of connection. And also to your calculator, I have a TI-83+, which I'm showing to you. And we'll look at how the calculator functions map onto some of those formulas. So a good couple of pages. And then you have your inferential statistics formulas as well, organized in slightly different manner. It's very general at the top, telling you about how to think about a test statistic, how to think about a confidence interval generally. And then it breaks down for each type of situation you might be dealing with, like single sample or two sample, the point estimate and standard deviation for each of those. So that's how that's organized. And then there's a reference area at the end, you see, to the chi-square test statistic. The back matter, so once you, you know, are at the last question and looking at the back of your textbook list, that's where you're going to find those tables that you might want to make reference to. If for some reason you're not able to pull up what you need in the calculator, these are back there for your reference all the time. So we have the z-score table here, the first half, and then the second half of that, a t-distribution table, and a chi-square critical values table or distribution table. So those you may need to use in addition to calculator functions. And you can find them in that order in the back of the textbook, starting with the z-scores, then t-distribution, and chi-square distribution. So let's return to the top of our formulas here and just make reference to some of these. Like we have the mean, standard deviation, pooled standard deviation, a sample regression equation. So here's one that has a particular function within the calculator, the regression estimates. So you have the general form here, Y hat, and the beta 1 and beta not values can be computed if you go to the stat menu and come over to calculate, come down to linear regression. So that's one of the functions you can use to get out of there. And then there are others that may be more or less useful depending on the type of question that you're presented with. So you could be working on one that's involving an exponential or a power or just a simple linear regression function. Also, you have many options similar in this test column of functions on your calculator. For example, if we wanted to do a linear regression t-test with some data input into the calculator and setting up the null hypothesis and so forth. Take a look and map on some of these other formulas that we have here. Here we have binomial probability. So for that, in the calculator, we can go to our program menu. This is why it really pays to study how to find things in your calculator. Here we go. So on the TI-83+, it's a math menu that will get us to probability functions. Notice they're on the top menu. Now if we scroll over there, we can figure out some part of the binomial formula by using any of these. Or you can generate a random number with those at the bottom. Let's see, if we wanted to compute something with one of these formulas, for example, NCR is that first part of your binomial formula. You would enter the n-value before the function and then the r-value after to generate that count. Here is where the majority of the functions in TI-83 are going to be related. When you're talking about inferential statistics, that's what most of this stuff is in the test options on the TI-83. So if you're looking to conduct a z-test or calculate a z-test statistic, then we would use these options, whether we have the given mean, standard deviation, and so forth. Or if we have a data list, come over here to this menu and hit our list. So lots of useful ways to sort of triangulate your study as you're moving through, match up those items from the formula sheet to the calculator, and also to the question that you have in front of you during your study, right? That's another important piece that we have to figure out in statistics as we're studying. It's how do I attach this particular problem to one of those formulas or a calculator function that I can actually use? So let's do just a quick round of some identification. So I'm looking at the College Board 2018 problems here. And you see, this is clearly a regression problem. You should be able to glance at that and know that immediately after some practice, after looking at some of the past years, other than this one, 2017, 2016, 2015. Immediately, this should jump out as regression. Identify and interpret the estimate of the intercept was the least square's regression line. So the intercept is going to be the constant coefficient, 72, 95, right there. Identify and interpret in context the coefficient of determination, R squared, 73.33. And we can interpret that as 73.33% of the variance in Y is explained by X, or the variance in time is explained by customers in line in this particular context. What appears to be an outlier in this picture, clearly this one, because it would steer your best line fit or best fit line down a bit. It would be an influencing point. So anything like that is considered an outlier. So that's a good regression. We could go back to our formulas and see where that matches up. Let's take a look at this one. This is talking about a survey question, "Do you regularly recycle plastic bottles?" And we are given a confidence interval. So we can take that information and start to run with it. How many students were in the sample selected by the environmental science teacher? Well, if it's how many in the sample, I need to know the margin of error, right? So I think about the center point of this interval, take a look at the margin of error, and then maybe I need to look back at some of the formulas to remind myself how that margin of error formula looks. So let's come back up to our starting material, find that formula here. We're in the inferential statistics and confidence intervals generally look like this, with critical value times standard deviation being the entire margin of error. And since this is a proportion example, that margin of error is going to be made up by this particular term as the standard deviation. And then the critical value, which we're told in this particular problem would be for a 95% confidence interval. To put in some of those initial pieces of information together, we could say that this times the appropriate z-score for our 95% confidence interval is going to be the margin of error, which is the half distance of this interval, right? We need to look at what is the center point and then what is the distance to that center point. See if we can get back going here. Suppose we wanted to know the center of this interval, then we would take their difference and divide by 2. So the margin of error is .166. And now we're ready to solve that particular 116. Let's figure it out. 116 is our margin of error. Then using the point estimate that's in the center of that interval, plug in for P, and 1.96 would be the appropriate z-score for that 95% confidence interval. Then we could go ahead and work through those calculations to figure out what the minimum sample is. All right. And did some quick sort of identification on some of these others. Notice that this particular problem tells us some probabilities, like 3.5% or .035 probability, 22% are left-handed of those children born in the region who are from multiple births. So there's some conditional probability language going on there. What is the probability that something given a condition is met already? So take a look back at our formulas sheet here. And obviously, excuse me, I'm a WEIZAT tutor and not very familiar with how Zoom works. So I'm trying to get this thing to where it will scroll. Okay. So for this particular question, we need to make reference to the conditional probability formulas. So looking at our formula sheet here, aware of where, what does that conditional probability formula look like again? There it is, right there. So that's going to help me out with this particular problem. And of course, I'm going to use my calculator for some of the multiplications. This might be another problem, looks like a contingency table going on here just by first glance. And let's look at that kind of question. "Do the data provide convincing statistical evidence that those who received the new procedure will have less recovery time from the surgery on average than those who received the standard procedure?" So we've got a test design going on here where we're going to set up some hypothesis, null and alternative, comparing these two samples, whether they use the standard procedure or the new procedure. Notice we have the summary information like the mean and standard deviation and sample size. So when that's the case, when you're looking at those summary statistics, rather than entering a list of data and using the data option in our calculator statistical test, we'll go to and this is going to be, looks like a pretty good sample. So I think we could say this is a two-sample z-test. And not data, but we have summary stats. So we need to come over here and use some of the information given as summary. So first standard deviation is 34, second standard deviation 29, first mean is 217, and second mean 186. I missed a little something there. Sample size of the first is 110, 186 for the second mean. Sample size of the second group is 100. And we didn't read so carefully through this, but you would want to, to make sure you set up your signage correctly. Let's take a look back. And see, we want to know if this reduces the average recovery time. If the new procedure reduces the average coverage time, then its mean needs to be lower. And it kind of is already, as you can see, that 186. We have it in the mu 2 place, so the sample 2 place of this particular calculator function. So since we're aiming for it to appear lower, we would want to come over and you can kind of see intuitively in that the lower or the less than point is pointed to our sample 2 mean. That's what we're trying to test here, whether the new sample, sample 2, as we've entered it, is statistically significantly different. All right. There we go. Calculate and make on our P-value there. Notice how small it is, lots of zeros because of e to the negative 13, or that means 10 to the negative 13 power times that. So there's .0013 times over, or 12 times over, and then a 5. So that's clearly less than, say, .05 or an alpha level, even a .001. So I'm going to stop rattling on. I am just giving you a little preview as to what you might find with some of our tutors on WEIZAT, helping you break down problems and figure out studying strategies and strategic moves that you can make while working through the AP exam, both in your study and on the actual day of. So now what I'd like to do is open the floor to any questions that anyone would like to present or ask. It doesn't have to be like about a particular problem. It can be, it can be more general, what sort of lingering questions you've had that maybe your teacher did not really understand or share with you, any insight, anything that you have, anything at all. And if you want me to make reference back to something that I was showing, I'd be happy to jump back over there as well and show, you know, another problem from one of those past exams. You know, one thing that students I have tutored locally in my area is, you know, how do I know which thing to do when I'm reading through a problem? How do I know? And my advice generally to that kind of question is you need to study those past exams and be comfortable with associating every single type of problem that's on those exams with one of the formulas or concepts that goes along with it. There are sample solutions online to those AP boards, College Board AP exams from the past. So use those to triangulate what you think versus what was stated as the sample key versus what you need to use as a formula or calculator option to come full circle in your study process. So there's some great questions coming up. "The T-value is a distribution that is normal-like or approximately normal. It is designed to handle those cases primarily when we have a small sample size. So it still exhibits the normal distribution. It's still almost like assuming the data is approximately normally distributed, but it takes into account how large a sample is and makes that normal distribution a little bit thinner or wider." And so that's what the T-values represent are, just like z-scores in the normal distribution, where are you in that particular T-distribution based on the degree of freedom or sample size? Another great question, "Do you need to write your process that you used for the TI-84 calculator?" No, not generally, but you probably need to express some of the stuff, the notation that goes along with it, right? If it's a two-sample z-test like we were just looking at, then make sure that you write down your null hypothesis and your alternative hypothesis and define who is sample 1 and who is sample 2. So you clearly express all of that that goes along with the topic. And then do your calculations in your calculator and express the results, like the P-value, the test statistic that was computed, and so forth. Maybe, you know, decide what of that output from your calculator is relevant for you to report as the result. And then you're going to be doing some interpretation of those results typically is how the questions are organized. Best method of prep is, as I was suggesting earlier, make sure that you can do past exams. Go there and find problems like you're going to see on upcoming exams. They'll be similar. And make sure that you're very comfortable saying, hey, that's a z-test question, or that's a paired sample t-test question, obviously, or that's a regression question. Be able to classify those questions very easily and comfortably from as many past exams as possible. And then, of course, once you've done that exercise enough, do the actual questions. So practice as many of those past exam questions as you can. And of course, meet with a tutor is a very good way of gaining alternative perspective because you in your own mind are only knowing and seeing what you've come to understand already. So that's the real value in reaching out to one of our WEIZAT tutors is that they'll be able to offer you that additional perspective on top of your regular studies. So the difference between the two chi-square tests? One of them is about variance, right? So if you're testing whether the variance equals some value, you would rely on the chi-square test for variance. That is separate from the chi-square test for independence or the chi-square test of best fit, in which you're making a hypothesis about what percentage of people or things are in each of these categories. And looking at actual data and testing that against your hypothesis, that's like a test of best fit or test of independence chi-square test, where you're looking at the proportions related to the actuals, the expected versus the actuals. And the other way of using chi-square as a test is to test the variance. Both of those would rely on your chi-square distribution. "How do you find a percentile of a normal distribution on a calculator besides using a z-table?" That's a great question. So for that, let me jump over to the calculator. If we wanted to figure out the percentile, we could come over into our stat options. And let's say we want to do a z-test. And probably making this a little more complicated. There are various ways of doing this same thing using other functions. But let's say that the exam has a standard deviation of 10, a mean of 78. And we're just interested in one person if we want to know the percentile with data already given. We don't need to do it for distributions of the sampling mean for a question like this. If we're just asked about percentile, and then what score do you want to find the percentile for? Well, let's say, what percentile are they at if they made an 85 on the test? That'll be my test value. And it doesn't matter which one of these we use, calculate, and that's at the 48th percentile, that score of 85. that score of eighty-five, given the sample data. I don't know, I did that slightly backward. Let me back up and correct. We should interchange what I entered for the test value and the mean. So the mean given should go here. The one, the test score I'm interested in finding the percentile for is going there. And then we'll press calculate. That is at the forty-eighth percentile. Interesting. So that's one way that you can do that type of calculation in particular. Let me come back to the chat window. To figure out how that works more carefully for who brought that question up, find some other examples where that has happened and go to those z-calculation functions in the calculator and try to replicate that answer. If you have the key and it says they were at the blank percentile, go into that function, enter the information and replicate that key result. That way you know what works when you're going into the calculator. When do you put the radical in under the standard deviation? That is when you are talking about a sampling. And so if it's not just about one person or the observing of one particular item, instead they give you, you're going out and observing a group of twenty of them or a sampling of fifteen items, then that's a case where that square root of n, that sample size, would factor into the standard error being under the standard deviation. If you're just starting out and extremely overwhelmed, I would suggest that you start looking at your options for meeting with someone. You're welcome to reach out to me after today's session or you can find someone else that you think would be more suitable for your learning style. If you like someone who maybe goes, you know, a little bit faster or is more energetic or slower or whatever it is. We have a diverse network of tutors on YZ, so I would really suggest that you look through them and at various budget points as well, which can really help. So try someone out for an hour would be my recommendation and just kind of start working through some exercises as best you can. That would be my number one way of getting started and trying to alleviate some of that feeling of being overwhelmed. Doing a t-test problem with the z-test formulas in the calculator can produce some slightly incorrect results. They will be in the neighborhood of one another because the z-distribution is similar to the t-distribution depending on the sample size. Like if their sample was a thousand or more, they would be producing the same results. But if your sample is small, like ten people, that z-test result is going to differ from the t-test result. So you really want to look out for those t-test indicators like the sample is less than thirty and/or you don't know anything about the population standard deviation. So those are some key things to be watching out for to say, okay, I should, instead of using a z-test, use a t-test when my sample is less than thirty typically or if I don't have a good idea of what the population standard deviation is. So cluster sampling is when we go out and we decide we're going to put a globe or dome around a bunch of things at once. Like we're going to take the whole state of Georgia and the whole state of Illinois and we're going to start surveying based on just those entire states and everyone that is a citizen of those respective states. That's cluster sampling, taking a big swath of something, putting a dome over it. So then I'm going to take this body of items or animals or things or people or whatever, and I'm going to make them part of my sample, that big group of them. Stratified random sampling, on the other hand, is when I decide on who I want to represent in my sample. Like I want to make sure that I represent teenagers, twenty-somethings, thirty-somethings, forties and all up there in the decades. If I want to make sure I have an equal representation of all of those age groups, then I will think of them distinctly as I set up my sampling process. And then I will draw one from the teenager group, one from the twenty-something group, one from the thirty-something group and go down the line and then come back to my teenagers, draw another one, another twenty-something. So I'm making sure I get a particular design of sampling from all of those respective groups, but not taking them all together, like all of the twenty-somethings. If I take them all together from one of those respective groups, that's a cluster of them. But if I just take, you know, an equal number from a set of defined groups, that's stratified random. Conditional probability, yes. I'd be happy to return to that question. The score to get a five on the exam? I'm not quite sure what the average raw score is necessary for a five. That should be available on the college board. Sort of looking at those past exams and reading through some of the details of those past exams. You should be able to decipher what it might take to get a five, but each respective exam is different. And it's, you know, calibrated according to difficulty after, you know, it's accounted for and all sorts of item statistics that they run later. And so to say that, okay, you definitely need twenty-seven raw points to get a five, it will deviate slightly from year to year. It's not bad to get a three. If the college will grant you AP credit or allow you to exempt some of their coursework based on your AP exam score with a three and they're satisfied with that, I would say it's not necessarily advantageous to you as a student to be able to show up at that college and say, hey, I got a four on my AP statistics exam. The instructor that you may have for, say, a higher-level statistics class or some other math class is not necessarily going to be all that impressed that you can show or prove or say that you scored a four as opposed to a three on the AP statistics exam. But that's a great question because what really matters is at the end of the day, when you seek to utilize this score or this credential that you're earning for the AP process, it's about getting that credit in college so that you can go on and study more of what you want to. It's not necessarily something you should think about like you get to do less. It's more, I would, I would say more in the mindset of you've mastered this material and so you're setting yourself up to do greater things. And so the reason I wanted to mention that is because that would be the motivation for you, right? To go ahead and strive for a four or a five as you're preparing for this exam because this type of knowledge, this, you know, will empower you to go on and study more things to have a better, you know, sampling or offering of options for what you can take in college. And who knows, maybe you'll go into a field in a major that utilizes statistics on a regular basis. And so this would put you kind of, you know, at a head start. If you did very well on the AP statistics exam, I would say you're, you know, coming in with good sort of savvy when it comes to statistics. If, if you go to high school, four or five. If you're coming in with a three or four, then don't necessarily adopt that sort of mindset that you know it all about statistics because you passed and you got your credit for the class. If there are opportunities to take other more practical statistic courses, for example, in education or psychology or whatever your area of interest or major, then doing okay, doing, you know, well and passing the AP statistics exam is great. And then you can kind of leverage what you've understood from this experience in those future classes or projects that you might be working on and work study or maybe a research team that you join if you're interested in research of the university. You know, there are all sorts of opportunities to use statistics, whether it's academic, getting your credits in college or if it's doing some type of work related to data analysis at the college. Good resources for multiple choice questions? The AP college board does primarily the free with science, right? So I would take a look at some of the book options. That's where you're going to find the most variety in those types of questions. Things like, you know, Kaplan. Oh, what are some others? I was just looking at one, the Princeton Review. I'm blanking on those publishers, but they spend a lot of time thinking about and having, you know, experts discuss, would this be an appropriate multiple-choice practice question to publish in our test prep book? So take a look out there, see, you can look on Amazon or in your local bookstore. Look at those test prep option books. They will provide some good content as far as multiple-choice questions. And calculating a conditional probability on the calculator was a question that came up. So I want to come back to that. I know you're still looking at my calculator. And so let me come out of that back in here. So you can see the conditional probability formula down here on the formula sheet, that second one down under the probability list. And let's come back to this problem involving conditional probabilities from 2018. So what is the probability a randomly selected child born in the region is left-handed? We have, from the given information, let's read back through here. Three point five percent of all children are from multiple births. Of those who are from multiple births, twenty-two percent are left-handed. So that piece right there, of those from multiple births, so given they're from multiple births, they are left-handed equals point two-two. That's how we can read that. The three point five percent being from multiple births, if we're using m to denote multiple births, that's p of m, point oh three five. And the children born in the region who are from single birth, eleven percent are left-handed. The single birth, that's not something we've written yet, but I would discourage more groups or more lettering. So instead of from multiple births, given single birth would be like m complements. And if they are left-handed is point one-one. Now, what is the probability a randomly selected child born in the region is left-handed? That would be the sum of these two by the law of total probability, right? If we look at all of those from singular births and all of those from multiple births who are left-handed, that makes up the entire sample space, multiple births and single births altogether. That would just give us p of L equals point three-three. P of L, point three-three for item A. And then that'll set us up with that conditional probability in item B. What is the probability that a randomly selected child born in the region is a child from multiple births, given that the child selected is left-handed? So given they are left-handed, what is the probability they're from a multiple birth? Let's pull in our formula. That's probability of m intercept L over L. So here, we have to sort of figure out based on the puzzle that we have in front of us, how we can determine that particular ratio, the intersection probability over the probability of being left-handed. We found the probability of being left-handed in the previous exercise, so we know this. That's done. We would need to sort through one of these in order to find the intersection. Like this one here would involve L intercept m over m. And we know m to be point oh three five down here. And therefore, it must equal point two-two from the given conditional and we don't know the intersection. Solve that piece, then log your x down into here and that is how that part B would be resolved. Right now, that's a long-winded answer to say that not often can you produce something probability-related from a calculator function. I'll just go back to the calculator and show you what those probability options were. It's just NPR, NCR and factorial or generate a random number. So not often can those calculator probability functions work with conditional probabilities. It's going to be more of your just standard, okay, I need to enter point oh three five in here and multiply it times point two-two to figure out that intersection, that value. And then I need to use that elsewhere to sort of fit my puzzle pieces together to resolve that particular item involving conditional probability. So I know that that probably wasn't the answer that you would have liked. I know it's nice when we have those calculator function options available and can just go straight to those for a particular type of question. Fortunately, that often works for questions involving hypothesis tests and V-intervals, confidence intervals involving a z-score, confidence intervals involving a t-score. All of those trusty functions are in the stat menu. So I would focus attention on understanding how to use those functions most. And then a variety of practice problems for things like conditional probability can get you comfortable and confident with how to arrange all of those ratios. Some of the crazy, like football diagram or mapping from outer space, right? But by working enough examples like that and possibly meeting one But by working enough examples like that and possibly meeting one-on-one with a tutor who can spend a little bit more time with you and break down all of those pieces, maybe a little bit more organized than I did there in Zoom. But our WiseNet environment is great because it's all locked into the browser and you can see everything that the tutor is writing on a whiteboard rather than on someone's, you know, just interface like I was showing you here in Zoom. So check it out if you haven't already using WiseNet. And it looks like we're getting near the end of our questions. So if there are no other questions, we can wrap up. If you want to reach out to me for tutoring sessions to meet and potentially go over some questions, discuss where you are and develop a plan for getting you where you want to be by the end of your study time, feel free to reach out to me on WiseNet. I would just talk into the chat. Also, if you're studying for other AP exams, there are more free AP study sessions like this one happening over the next few weeks. So check the second link in the chat for information about signing up for those. Thanks for joining me today and good luck with studying for your exams and on the exam itself, once that day comes. And if you don't want to reach out to me in particular, I will not be hurt. Like I showed you earlier, there are a wide network of tutors out there on WiseNet that are ready and willing to help you. So try them out and I wish you the best.